Where's your sand?
Oh, yeah.
Like sands through the hourglass.
Okay, I'll call it to order and open the Wednesday, October 16th, City Council Special Meeting. I have no approval of the agenda to start.
So moved?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yes.
I expect if everybody seconds it, we don't have to vote. Okay. We are continuing our discussion on four dune management. And I'm hoping that Jeff can tell us where we were and bring us back up to speed.
Okay, thank you. I've given you a revised set of, I called them clean editions so that they just read straight through so we didn't have the various different strike-throughs. I can't give you that version at the, say, the next time we meet if you'd like that with, along with this clean version, clean edition. But I've given you those. And what I tried to do was, as the staff report says, you guys gave me direction to remove all language surrounding grading for views. So I tried to just take anything that really had grading for views and either strike that or change that to put the health, safety, and natural system, integrity of the natural system. So then, you know, I've also adopted a new science of the Allen Report, so that will be, you've already kind of agreed to move forward with that. Language reflect the new grading components. And I can walk through some of that with you if you like. But where we left off was, we left off with getting to the permitting process, a part of the process. And so whether it should be a conditional use permit and how, and the direction we want to go from there. Because if we're taking grading for views out, there's still the maintenance component, and then there's this remedial component. Those maintenance and remedial, if we're going to do some form of grading and it's going to be called maintenance, and then the remedial, which is currently being interpreted as any structure, although we will, I'll read you the language, I think it's, needs to be clarified, we need to have that to what we're happy with. Because if we're going to allow grading in some situations, those are the two that are going to have to pick up any slack of what was being done with the other component. So getting a clear understanding of what maintenance grading means, the limits of that, and the parameters around that, what's the process that someone would go through to do that, and then how is that different than remedial grading? And so I have the PowerPoint from last time where it starts back with permitting, but we can also just kind of go through, kind of the concepts of permitting by the questions and then get a feel for that and then bring those back to you in a new document, however you would like to operate.
With your report, showing what there's consensus on, and then you have a series of questions on it.
Right, yeah.
It seems appropriate since we've all had a chance to make some questions, maybe try to answer those.
Yeah, just kind of walk through those.
Before we begin to go to the documents themselves.
Okay. It would be on page three of the staff report, number six.
Okay. So the conditional use aspect of sending it to the planning commission?
Yeah.
I think, personally, I think that's still the best venue, you might say, for oversee, oversight.
Yeah, I think, agree with you. Looking at that, I think the remedial, as it relates to removing sand inundation, ought to be a permitted use, it can probably be handled administratively. I think it still needs to meet the general standards of sand removal and that sort of thing, but that seems like a pretty clear permitted use. And when you get into the grading, whether it's maybe, it's still remedial, but it's remedial movement of sand on the course slope, not just away from the buildings, and those should be conditional, by the planning commission.
Okay. And so the, so anything that's not kind of an inundation of a structure is more of the, that's what you're, we're looking at the maintenance grading kind of.
Yeah, that's what I.
Okay. And that's good then be handled through a CUP process in front of the planning commission?
What's a CUP?
Uh, conditional use permit, sorry. So, so the length of time granted for four dune grading CUP, should that be a set period per project?
I think the project should define the period.
So?
So if, and this becomes very complicated, in my mind, of how, if a project is brought forward that has multiple years' worth of minor movements of sand, that could be within a one permitted prospect, so that the planning commission is looking at the total project rather than each year that it happens. That would include, as verse two, a single project, which would be just one little shovel of sand somewhere, and replanting and all that kind of stuff. So I think there needs to be some capability for variation within what the permitting could allow.
So should, I guess we could, that would lead to be, should the amount of sand and cubic yards permitted to be graded under a four dune grading CUP be limited to a certain amount for the total plan or per, you know, year or whatever?
I think an annual amount would be a good starting point for that permitting process because if there's a big project in mind, then they could plan it what the year would allow.
I guess my problem with going multiple years, and that is a big project, and then it's more than 2,500 cubic yards. And my view, at least, of this remedial dune grading to repair, shape, work, cover access, cuts, blowouts, erosion, I don't see that as being a long-term project. There's a need, requirement, and you go before the commission with a plan to address that issue, and how you're going to do it, and how you'll report on it. And if the next year you see a need to do it, that'd be part of your report, say this seems to be working, or we need to make a change and amend that, not amend it, but file a new permit application. And that's the reason I see it being an annual, one-year time limit, but you can come back over and over to reflect back that maybe the plan doesn't work as you intended. But having a long period of time, like five years, to find out, I think, too late to address.
Yeah, I'd like to see one year for accountability's sake.
If you're going to have a large, if you're going to have a multi-year project, then that, to me, is not maintenance. Maintenance, to me, is there's a problem here, let's take care of it.
Yeah.
And that's a project, that's one project. It's not a project that's going to last years and years.
Okay. And so, so there, really, what you're kind of proposing is there's really not a monitoring plan to a project. They have to meet certain conditions, but there's not going to be a monitoring plan for two, three, five years out. That we will, we will have, the city will have a monitoring plan for its four dune system. I guess we could do that as a, you know, as a suggestion, the four dune plan, where five years or so, but nothing for that project.
Think about somebody coming in for a building permit. If it meets all the ordinance requirements, it's approved. If they're looking for variance, then it has to go to the planning commission. Once it's, the permit is approved, construction is completed, then there's a building inspection that says, yes, you complied with your plan, done.
Right.
And then if they want to add a garage, they got to come back through the loop again. So that's kind of the way I see this sort of, I think maintenance gets confusing here, but.
Okay.
Grading to address breaches of the course slope, erosion. That should not be a long-term project, that you're saying, well, I'm later from this year, we're going to have the same problem next year, next year, next year.
Yeah.
In that case, probably have the wrong plan.
Okay.
Also, I think there should be some monitoring, even if it's a maintenance grading, to take care of a problem, because we want to know that A, the grasses have been planted.
Yes.
That the right ones have been planted, that they're growing, they're not dying.
So that one time, they go back out, yeah, exactly. And if they have to, you know, come back and re, you know, do something that they didn't, we would need to follow up with that. I wasn't suggesting get rid of all monitoring, I'm saying it's just that one time.
Yeah.
We go back.
Yeah.
I guess, just my point of view is, the initial reaction that I had to the flat areas of the dunes was to bring those back to a more natural state. That's a bigger project than 2,500 cubic yards at any one time. So I was looking at it from kind of a planning commission point of view, so I'd like to see what the entire design would be for bringing the areas that are flat and unattractive back into a more natural state. So I don't see that, that is not a, that's the problem to me. I don't see a problem, breaching is not a concept that we're going to run into, we don't have dunes that need to be breached or could be breached. Erosion could be. It actually is a dramatic problem on the east side in some areas of the Breakers Point Dune. So I guess I'm looking at, to me, the problem is, how do I bring the dunes back to a more aesthetic state? And again, that's more than one 2,500 cubic yard move.
My response to that is, when those grading for views were approved, the condition was that they be regraded in an undulating pattern to match the dunes over there. They did not, that's part of what brought all this about. But we also know that those dunes began to shift, move around, and take on a more natural look at the time. So I don't know if somebody would want to go out and spend the money just to go out and move some sand around, make it bumpy and hilly. And I don't think that's, that's getting into grading. And you said the other day, view corridors, and I have, I can't tell you, which is accused of just grading for views under a different name, and that's not what we're going to do. So I understand what you're saying, it's really ugly, that's part of the problem. It's ugly, just plant, and that's why I objected to it when I was on the planning commission, and when I was on the first one, the council. But to go in and try to correct that, I think other nature will do a good job of correcting that. And I hate to open the door to go in and begin dune grading for an aesthetic that, frankly, I don't believe in.
We voted not to have grading for view, and I think actually that means that we don't need to have a maintenance grading plan. I would like to fall back on the remedial dune grading and have remedial dune grading that might be approved under a different category, but, but keep them both remedial and not have a maintenance grading. Maintenance grading, to me, kind of feels like Feng Shui, where you get out a little rake and start doing all your little magic. That's not what we've got here. We've got beauty, we've got rugged beauty and openness, and I'd like to see it stay like that.
You know, and Goal 18 says that you need to have a comprehensive plan to address construction in the dune area. And it says that you only need a dune management plan, a four dune management plan, if you're going to grade for views. And if we're not doing that, I think we can dispense with a dune management plan, a formal four dune management plan, and look at the overlay ocean zone ordinance and address all the things we've talked about with the permitted uses, that'd be essentially the inundation, removal of sand from the structure, and a, I think the word, permitted and conditional use, would be, all of the uses that are shown up to these various documents as dune grading, but it's really course slope grading to address and repair or erosion access that have been blocked because of washouts, blowouts, and that sort of thing. And those are, to me, those are the kind of maintenance you're referring to, but there's that other maintenance that came with the four dune management plan for grading the units. No longer have the units, no longer need the four dune grading plan. That was a maintenance, once you've done those major grading projects, then you had to maintain, you had to maintain them. Maintenance we're talking about is remedial to correct issues or problems that come from nature.
Yeah, I'm going to let Bill speak to that.
And generally, that's right, but as I was reading through Goal 18, what Implementation Requirement 7 says is, grade under sand movement necessary to maintain views or to prevent sand inundation may be allowed only for structures, four dune area, and part of an overall plan for managing. So I think if you're going to allow grading to, to prevent sand inundation, you're going to have to do it as, through the four dune management plan. And so, you know, getting rid of views takes care of parts of it, but because we're still dealing with inundation, you're still going to have to have the four dune management plan.
Can't we call it a conditional use?
Absolutely.
And as a remedial plan?
At.
So that it's a planning commission topic.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the big question is really, what are the limits, you know, in terms of, somebody comes in and says, well, no, 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 we're not doing it for views, but it's come within 20, 20 feet, and so we want to take it all the way back and, you know, and drop it down 10 feet to make sure it doesn't inundate us in the future. And, you know, as I think you indicated, grading for views without it, and how do you make sure that doesn't happen?
It has to be an existing prop, correct?
Yes. Well, it has to be within, well, if you're, if you're not, if you're doing for inundation, yeah, then it's got to be a developed property where you have issues, you know, inundation issues.
Robin, are you, so you're, you want to call, instead of maintenance, you basically want to call it remedial, and so.
A conditional use.
Well, sure, under conditional use. On page seven of the draft zoning ordinance amendments, which would be, well, you've got that, they, they talks about the goals, and, or it says permits for four dune grading may be approved, you know, by the planning commission. To ensure the dunes sustain an adequate sand volume in order to withstand erosional effects and to minimize any potential for wave overtopping and inundation of backshore. Number two, to strengthen weak points in the dune system by repairing areas subject to localized blowouts from wind or waves in order to prevent the dune buffer from weakening and potentially being breached during a storm. Number three, to maintain valuable habitat for a wide range of plants and animals, such as shellfish, including razor clams, and in some cases, rare species. Number four, to maintain the integrity and natural beauty of the dunes. So those would be under remedial?
Correct.
Is this what your proposal is?
That's what I'm hoping for, yes.
I would, I would just ask you just to go to that next page, which is page eight, number four, remedial dune grading, and read that definition there, because that's really what we're getting at, is what Councilwoman Rizley was talking about, remedial grading is the clearing of sand necessary to maintain the function of a structure. Removal of sand that has built up against exterior walls, doors, or windows of a structure and that blocks access to a residential or commercial structure, or may cause damage to these structures qualifies as remedial grading. And that, you know, that has been read from everything, from sand coming onto landscape to someone's fence. If we are going to go by this remedial dune grading definition of a structure, I would want to clarify that much better than what it currently is, because I think by this paragraph, a structure is seen in at least three different lights in, within one paragraph, and that's very difficult to administer.
So it'd be the structure itself that we need to define it.
Yeah. I mean, that, if that's what your intent is, we need to define that as such, is what I'm saying.
Okay, yes.
And that would be a permitted use.
Yes, they're allowed, that's remedial, yeah, inundation.
The way it's set up currently is if you've got sand blocking your doors and windows, it's permitted, you get to go do it.
Right.
If you want to get a little further out from it to do those four objectives that, that you read, then you got to go to the planning commission and get a CUP.
Correct.
So you don't need a conditional use permit for remedial?
Not, not if it's inundating issue.
It's just an outright permitted use. You, do you have to get any kind of permission from the planning department?
It's a permit.
It is a permit, okay.
But if they, if they want to do more than just push it away from the building, then it's got to be permitted, I mean, a conditional use, and go through and see how they're going to do it, they're going to comply with all the ordinances.
Yeah, yeah.
So how easy would it be to put those two different sections together under one heading of remedial?
Let's, let me transolve this, let's not put them under two, under the same word. Remedial for, what we've defined it for, let's find another word that's not maintenance and not remedial that just fits for them. I mean, just, that would be a heck of a.
That was something that, that Robin was.
Well, I, I did that because I wanted to really limit what it was, and the only way I could do that is to go a little squishy in the middle of remedial and needing to get permits for that, under remedial.
Yeah, and that just confuses everything, as far as I'm concerned, I mean.
Like protective, Bill suggested protective, or.
Preserve.
Preserving.
Yeah, preserve, yeah.
Anticipatory, almost.
Yeah.
Getting out in front where you see it's coming.
So what we would call remedial now would be preservation, or, or would it be?
Actually, it's more of how we've been, they've been treating maintenance type of.
Okay, so it'd be more, more of the maintenance, okay.
That's a problem all the way through, all these documents, that grading in different ways, remedial in different ways. Back to what Bill was saying. If according to Goal 18, it's a either or, inundation or grading for views, I have, I guess I have it here, but I'm right in front of me. So I guess it didn't make sense, partly, if you're getting buried and you're allowing them to push it out away from the building 20 feet, or 3, 5, or 3, 3, maybe something about 20.
There's a 10, 10 feet.
Then why would you need a dune management, four dune management plan when you talk about moving it off of somebody's front porch?
I think what they want you to do is look comprehensively, and so if you've got this area where you've got sand coming on, and one person's pushing it off their property, that means their neighbor is going to suffer, and the plan is, let's make sure we deal with it comprehensively, is the only thing I can think of. It's really about make sure you understand the consequences and that you understand what's going on with the system. And if, in fact, it's a temporary, you know, the science says it's only temporary, it's going to be one year that we have this, and then it's going to go back to something else, you know, then we're going to do one thing if the science says it's going to continue, it might be something different. And, you know, that, that's, I think if you look at Goal 18, it's to protect the dune system because it provides important advantages, and if we're going to allow dune, dune grading of any kind, let's do it subject pursuant to a plan where we take a look at it comprehensively. You may disagree with it, but that would be my.
Take a little bobcat and scooping it off your patio, or just something like dune grading, putting it back where it came from, restoration.
But I think that's what they're getting at, is that they don't want to just, it's not going to be a comprehensive strategy for the future if you're just kind of bobbing that in the now and putting it back, you know, it's going to come back and, or it's going to go to the nidds or some kind of.
You mentioned part of the comprehensive plan, it's going to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, already ordered to follow that, without, I'm just trying to get away from yet another report that adds more confusion, more work, and every time something changes, we've got to go back and change that and make sure all the definitions track. And it seems so burdensome, kind of four dune management plan that is extensive to deal with the inundation of somebody's property.
And hopefully, you know, I, I get you, and yeah, it does seem pretty excessive if all we're going to allow is limited grading, but, you know, the goal, the goal says what it says, and, you know, the idea is, if that's what you want to do, just make sure there's enough flexibility built into the plan so that when, if you later want to change the ordinances, you still are inconsistent with the plan, because, you know, either circumstances change, or, you know, the, the council has, you know, has experience and it wants to accommodate, and that is still within what's anticipated in the plan.
One last question.
Yeah.
Jump back in. Can the four dune management plan, it's there to address just inundation and cover the structure, be limited just how you deal with the removal of the sand from the structure? Or do they have to cover the whole dune again? I mean, obviously, any structure alone?
Yeah, I, I think the, the four dune management plan could be pared back significantly if all we're going to do is, is the, the, you know, dealing with inundation. All right. This will keep Jeff busy.
He likes this stuff. He told me that.
You wouldn't be a planner if you didn't.
Personally, I think it's irresponsible for us not to be looking at the dune system as an entirety, from the high tide line to the, whatever they're calling the final line, to the. final line to the east, you know, as, you know, that's part of our, what I would hope is our responsibility as the city that has been granted the maintenance of that relationship with state parks is to help maintain the dunes. We've been given the authority through Goal 18 to create a dune management plan. That plan should be something that we can design to say sometime in the future when things change, we can fix it, um, when we need to. If we're stuck with just a remedial system, um, it gets really complicated to fix a problem with one of our beach accesses or with, you know, who knows what could come up. So I think, I think we must have a dune management plan. What that entails is what our job is and how we need to write that up. If we don't want to have, uh, dramatic changes in the dunes, you know, we figure out a way to do that by being like what Bill says, is flexible about how we do it. Limiting how much sand can be moved at any one time, that's a pretty good way to do it, but it still allows sand to be moved. So...
I wonder if you're getting, if we're confused with, it is redundancy and conflict between the comprehensive plan, which addresses dune management, and there are ordinances to follow from our comprehensive plan to get into the, the griddy on what you can and can't do. And if we have a dune management plan that just says the same thing, and we need to make a change, just having a dune management plan doesn't change anything, we still have to go back and make sure it complies with that comprehensive plan, gotta, uh, there are ordinances to address any changes that we didn't anticipate, and a dune management plan, all it can say is, yeah, you can make changes, well, you can do that anyway. I'm just having a hard time finding what the dune management plan does, particularly in light of the fact that what it did before was address these large dune gradings review, and we're not doing that now, so we're not managing the dunes or addressing safety and security and integrity of the force of...
So, um, my answer would be, or the way I've tried to, when you guys gave me the direction, what I tried to do is exactly kind of start doing what you had just said. To me, there were a lot of kind of repetitions or redundancies in comp plan forty, so I tried to give just the thirty thousand foot direction guidance for comp plan language. So they, I've cut those back, got rid of any kind of, you know, twenty-five centimeters should not be in comprehensive plan language in my, uh, understanding of a comprehensive plan. Uh, and so then get down to the, um, zoning, I've, I've got those metrics in there and those kind of specifics, but the four dune plan, uh, even to what you all are getting at, if you're gonna be comfortable with conservation or preservation and then remedial, what I try to do is then leave like the planting specifications, the grading specifications and that stuff, that should be in the map four dune plan. And so that, that's the role that could play in this is the way I see it. And if new science comes up that we think's great for, and we should adopt that, then we can go back before, uh, planning commission and say, hey, this is new science, we, let's change our four dune management plan 'cause, hey, we've really found out this hybrid grass is, is the best thing for, you know, and so we can adopt that and change that without having to go back to comprehensive plan, without going to the zoning or whatever and, and do that.
I agree with what you're saying. I, some changes we're looking at in the ordinance was to give a, an option of the applicant recommending a different grass.
Yeah.
And the planning commission aware of new science, either agreeing or saying, no, this is what we're gonna do. So if, if the new management plan is to establish broad scientific issues, I have a problem with doing that. I just don't wanna see the new management, uh, plan telling you where you can grade, how much you can grade, when you grade, I'm in favor of that thing.
Yeah.
If you shake the dunes, try to match the contours, if you're planting, plant it this way, plant it during this time, uh, can't legal it to ourselves, you can't put it out there too deep, you know, all those things. If that's what you're talking about in a dune management plan and not shedding into the weeds on what the grading is, that the ordinance doesn't say, then, oh, the dune is done, get rid of it altogether. But it feels right. He read it to me, I, I know he's, tell me, one day, the twenty foot.
Uh-huh.
Where'd that, that showed up someplace and I could not find it.
I think that was a proposal by the planning commission at one time, I think.
Yeah, Denise?
So it was thirty-five feet, and when we were working with the planning commission to provide the very first draft of a four dune management plan, um, press staff and DLGD talked about where it should be, um, and so when they came up with the twenty feet, neither of them had realized that there was already a thirty-five foot, and so the twenty foot came from that conversation and was plugged in to the SFP draft that was provided to the planning commission.
Okay, but I'm just concerned that it came from, from state.
And it's not a requirement, there's less, most communities are somewhere between ten and thirty feet, um, between the six, one of those that has a thirty feet.
I think we felt thirty-five.
Yeah.
We know there's some landscaping, particularly breakers, it's already that far. If, if in the remedial or inundation of structures, they start pushing sand away, thirty-five feet, are they allowed to go across the city right away, the street? Or should it be up to thirty-five feet but not exceeding their property line? Just getting into the weeds on that.
Yeah, and there's two different things. One, there's regulatory aspect, and then there's a proprietary aspect. You can say, you know, up to thirty-five feet, but then as the, not the owner, but the owner and, um, you know, you hold it in trust for the public, you can say to somebody, no, you cannot push across our right of way.
We don't have to put that.
Right, you can do that regardless of what's in the plan or what isn't.
That brings up another question then, if somebody, it's in the OM zone, there's very few houses, but there are several, um, has a buildup of sand on their property, can they just haul it away? Or do they have to push it out?
So if it's not part of the four dune, you know, I'm, I'm gonna give you my initial reaction with, you know, the, thinking about it a little bit further, I, I think they probably could, you know, it's if they're, if it's part of the four dune system, that's where you get into problems.
Yeah, and I'd have to also look at just other sections of the code too and how that's written, you know, the OM, part of the OM.
It's likely the, the volume.
Well, I've been throwing the sand through my gutters just out in the yard.
I, I guess that's just because if the property owner in the, in between said no, what are they gonna do with the sand? That's one thing, one problem. And the other problem is when you do push the sand away, you just build up a bigger dune in front of you, which causes more problems next year. So that's part of that maintenance issue that I think we're running into. Um, I, I'm trying to hear what Mike is saying. The dune management plan, in my sense, is our policy. So yes, it would be a policy description. It would not be in the weed details. That is for the zoning ordinances. Um, but we still have to go through all the zoning ordinances to make sure everything lines up and get rid of the language that is cockeyed.
And just one hesitation with that, Goal 18 also gives some details about what is supposed to be in a dune management plan, and it talks about plan should also address in detail the following specified in implementation wire, one with special emphasis placed on identification of appropriate measures for stabilization, avoiding or minimizing grading or deposition which could adversely affect surrounding property. So there are some things that the goal requires at least some level of detail, um, but yeah, you know, it, we don't necessarily get in, you know, a lot of the detail that was in there doesn't have to be there, it's more, you know, just...
If we can, can, I don't know, can, can that detail just be a reference to the zoning ordinance, or can that detail be, or does it have to be very specific?
It could probably incorporate things, you know, policies in, in the comp plan because it is a adjunct prop, uh, adjunct document to the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And make it simpler to administer down the road, you don't have to remember, oh, we changed that there, or that other place we're talking about.
Yeah.
They're gonna stand direct some of these.
Yes.
Hmm, okay.
Taking notes?
Yeah. Uh, and so to get back to that, are we, uh, comfortable with, uh, preservation or, as the other?
I kinda like that.
That, okay.
That fits with, with the Goal 18, what Nancy read off was the, for...
Okay.
Pro's achieved balance for, you know...
And so to kind of finish up that number six, then, C talks about, uh, just like Nancy had said about, uh, um, you know, that, that one monitoring, you know, is, you want me to include in there that the applicant provide those funds, I think that's the...
I wouldn't take it out of the toolbox.
Yeah.
Just because there might be an instance where we want monitoring.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that would be worked out with the permit holder and stuff like that, and how that would work, but if the monitoring was to test a new breed of grass or strain of grass or something like that, or whatever, uh, maybe somebody has some other ideas on how the grass is planted, that kind of thing I could see would be very valuable to be monitored.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I, I will move the, all that language to reflect that. Uh, then, um, we would not have to deal with seven A. Um, I would assume that these would all go just as any conditional use permit, well, that's just gonna be the normal notice to surrounding landowners, um, and then up to my, if I wanna extend that, um, oh, should the length of time be granted, we said one year, um, and then seasonally constrained, or do y'all have any thoughts on the seasonal discussion?
It seems to me that the one that I, excuse me, the one that I saw that was discussed in this, in these papers was April through June, but I thought Bruce had said that, um, there was another time of year that was better planting.
Well, I did make that one change already that we talked about, about, um...
November through...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I think we may have already cleared that up actually with that.
Yeah, I, I liked the way it was done.
Uh, the amount is the next, uh, it's twenty-five hundred cubic yards is currently specified, or is there another amount you all are thinking about?
We've waited for that for a long time, I don't know what justification to change it is.
And then, um, should mowing or trimming of grasses or stabilizing vegetation be eliminated? The planning commission proposed that be eliminated?
Yes, the planning commission suggested that.
Y'all ready?
The only thing I was originally saying, heck no, um, but after observing that one little patch that's been mowed, um, again, I'm, I'm the kind of guy that likes to have all the tools I can get in my toolbox, um, that patch is growing back denser than it originally was. Um, that's just my observance, I'm not a scientist on grass growing, but, um, maybe it would be interesting to do a study on that somehow and ask, uh, Sally to consider upgrade, updating that on, us on that in some future date, 'cause obviously it's gonna take a couple of years to sort something like that out. But for that weird opportunity that you want a lot of that grass to be really dense, there's a tool there. So I wouldn't eliminate it totally, but I would say there's a moratorium on it till we can get better science.
What I say on that is keep mowing it and in the, in the yard.
I think what they'll find out, but I, this is again, I'm not the scientist, but my observation would be that the denser it gets, the bigger it's gonna grow because it's gonna be a dune that grows faster.
Keep mowing it, keep mowing it.
No, you only mow it once a year.
I think that we're looking for rugged beauty, we're not looking for a golf course.
But we could be looking for a dune that we need to support sand quickly.
But if you mow it, it's not...
Again, that's the science, the science is gonna tell us whether that, what happens...
I'd like to suggest that we, uh, respect the planning commission's suggestion and not have mowing.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they say that, Sally, they're saying that the pollinants capture more sand, drop it down than cutting it short. I think you may be right on the density.
It's gonna be...
Not sand capture, not capacity. Yeah, I guess I'd prefer no mowing.
Anyone else on that one?
I think I'm leaning toward no mowing, no mowing, hard to say. Um, no moaning, me.
Yeah, no mowing.
But I, I'm not in favor of the mowing either, however, I am in favor of finding out what happens to that, that path.
Yeah, I'm kinda curious about that myself.
So, uh, what about an avenue of a conditional use permit?
Allow a conditional use permit for mowing or stabilizing vegetation trimming?
Or, I, you know, I think Sam's idea of seeing if there's some kind of a, uh, you know, just a, maybe a demonstration area that we could look at to see, I don't know if that's even possible, but...
Maybe no mowing except...
It would be a conditional, conditional permit requirement if you go to the planning commission.
It would have to go through that.
Actually, kinda what I said was a moratorium, no mowing until we know better and ask Sally to do some science on it.
Okay.
Do you know how long they've been mowing? Been quite a long time, I think, but I know that if they're doing it, we're not with the planning commission.
Yeah, I think was, I think, at least that I know of, back through the nineties, I think, is, so, I don't know.
How much more time do we need to evaluate, the better, the dune?
But yeah, under, under control, I, I would, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
We could try to work up something, no mowing except for experimental demonstration plot or something, we can see if we can find some language to...
I'm, I'm okay with taking it out and saying no mowing, I'm just saying that there was a possibility that there was a tool there that we could use in the future. I'm not committed to it, I'm just saying that there are things involved with maintaining a piece of property that you kind of test things around a little bit and figure out what works best for what you might need in the future.
I think we need to really pin down what we're doing and not leave it so open-ended.
Yeah, we certainly lose the natural look to the dunes when you start manicuring.
Um, so the next, um, number eight, should plantings be held to the planting standards of page nineteen of the four dune management plan? And so I didn't go through each one of these, you know, there's, um, this is the one that deals with, um, the grass shall be planted in hills with an average of three live colms stems per hill, three live colms shall be present on at least ninety percent of the hills, this means there will be approximately three thousand four plants per one thousand square feet and one hundred and thirty-six, thirty thousand six hundred and eight... This means there will be approximately 3,004 plants per 1,000 square feet and 136, 30,680 plants per acre. And then, and so then on down to the spacing, which is 12, grass should be planted at a depth of 12 inches. So I didn't go through each one of those. Do you all want to, are there any certain things in there that you all have issues with or would like to see changed?
Bruce.
I can just make, if I can make a comment. On something like that, I would just refer to best practices rather than have something set at a point in time that a decision was made and then you have to do something that may not be best practice. I think that, you know, that information is available and we can hold people to that standard. But to, to set our own, I don't know, qualifications.
And it's also, I would speak to that as that is taken directly from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development's Dune Management Planning, a guide to preparing a dune management plan as provided for, for in statewide planning Goal eighteen.
But if they change, if something changes there with the old standard, refer to that as fine because they are the experts, but not necessarily tied to what they said to do today.
Yeah.
It, it, the, the stand, the document was created in 1989, so it may well be outdated already.
Yeah, maybe outdated.
So, yeah, or best standards.
Best practices.
Or best practice.
Yeah, I mean, that's used in a lot, a lot of, you know, regulations, landscape industries, those kind of things.
That gives us.
The dollars changes.
Yeah, and, and I can put that kind of language definitely within a, you know, zoning ordinance a lot better than I can these kind of things.
Yeah, it's part of the problem of coming up with a forwarded management plan in accordance with Goal eighteen. And Goal eighteen will very well be outdated in its particulars. And so we're playing our hands. That's another reason I'd like to do away with forwarded management plan. I said I'd drop it, but.
In making the, the comment that I did, I'm not talking about just having somebody come in and say, this is what we want to do.
Oh, no.
I'm referring to something like having an actual, like Dr. Hacker say, this is what you should do to accomplish this particular result and then allow us to read through, relying on that.
I agree.
So that takes us to the number nine. Should the perceived grandfathered grading provisions explicitly cease with passage of ordinance? In other words, when we pass this ordinance, you want me to put in some language that states, you know, all.
Existing permits are hereby terminated, must be re, reauthored, and any grading within the city's forwarding system must be reauthorized pursuant to the standards in this ordinance.
Right.
Do we have?
Yeah.
Do we have many outstanding permits?
I'm not going to answer that.
I think the answer is no, we have no outstanding permits, but we do have people that are grading based on their outstanding, whether they're.
They're understanding.
They're understanding.
Understanding.
Perception as they.
Right, right. So I think they're, I mean.
All right, was there anything else? That's really through my points of consideration and I think I've gotten the guidance that I needed to bring back a final. And I can bring it back, like I said, clean with a kind of strike through version if you'd like.
Do we need to have any language in there, just a sentence that says grading will not be allowed for views, just so that we're clear on that? I didn't see any reference at all.
It may have been, you know, like you said, you said get rid of it, so I may have done that and so I'll put something back in there.
I wrote that in on my draft.
As more prohibitive, right?
Yeah.
I think under, the place under limitations, I think, so I don't, let me figure that out.
And then are we, are we, let's see, I'm going to go back, I'm not sure which one this is. Oh, on the actual plan itself that you gave to us, I had a couple of questions on that. Are we going to go through that?
We can, we can go through the documents if you like. I just didn't know if you want to wait to do that to when we get the, clean with the strike throughs and final version or?
Well, I had, I had a couple of questions on, on that, if we can look at that.
Okay.
On page seven of the actual plan.
Okay.
The top of the page, the first paragraph, that a property owner's desiring to grade may consider a variety of options to collectively finance grading activities, including development of a taxing district or local improvement district. And I'm not sure why I wrote this, but apparently the, my impression was, does this open to views? Does this, I mean?
Yeah.
This is all written to cover the previous management plans that allowed grading for views. So a lot of this, I think.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of this will be taken out.
Okay, so that, so that will be taken out then or?
I, I don't think it necessarily adds very much as much as provides a suggestion for people who are collectively looking at something. And if, if in fact you have an area where you have multiple properties being inundated, they may well want to collectively finance and, and deal with it. But, you know, whether that sentence is in there or not doesn't really matter. They can.
I guess the reason I, I guess, I'm thinking back, I can think the reason I asked that to myself was if people are all getting together to remove, to, to finance the removal of sand, what is their real objective?
Yeah, and, and I know, you know, Pacific City historically has had some issues where you had, you know, a huge buildup of sand that inundated a whole row of houses. And if somebody's doing their property and you're going to bring it back home in, it probably makes sense to do all the houses at the same time. And so.
As long as there's some kind of language that says it's not for views.
Yeah, right.
And then at the bottom of, of page seven, it says the scope and timing of the sand management measures outlined above are intended to minimize adverse impacts to these adjacent areas. And I guess I wouldn't, can you give a such as? Can you give an example of what?
Nancy, these are all in historical management unit strategies, but no longer have units.
You know, this whole.
So all of this will be taken out?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if you'd like to. I just, I changed that to say, you know, historical management unit strategies, just to give the, kind of the history of how it was done. So that's kind of that, why I changed that section, section to kind of read as this is how it's been handled in the past. But, you know, any, any kind of current language in here does not talk about, I, I got right rid of the, each of the maps of the original and made this one map that just shows those historical management units.
I just had, is this historical part even necessary?
Yeah, I know.
I think it adds confusion.
Yeah, obviously.
She got confused.
Yeah.
And it may be worth either eliminating Tyler or at least half a paragraph that said this used to be managed through units, that's no longer the case, you know, something much shorter to the point.
Who is the leader of that?
Well, I think it may be useful, you know.
For the state?
Seven, eight years from now when, you know, there's been a turnover or something and somebody comes in and says, but Breakers Point got to do this. And you have that history of, well, yeah, it used to be managed through units, but we've gotten away from that.
Yeah, I, I, on page one in the introduction, I put, this is an updated version of the city's forwarding plan. The city of Cannon Beach Forwarded Management Plan is historically focused on management unit areas. This updated plan looks beyond those lines to manage the forwardings from Silver Point to Chapman Point from the southern extent of the city limits to the northernmost.
So my impression was if it's an updated plan, that would be, would have been part of the updated plan, which obviously is not. So there needs to be some demarcation and this is, this is history. I do have one other question and again, I may be reading it wrong. Page fifteen. The areas where this plan allows for dune grading are backed by lawns. And then it says or Ocean Avenue. And I was wondering if you mean on Ocean Avenue? And then I think this also speaks to the question we had earlier. These areas do not require vegetation for secondary stabilization of the dunes. However, if this configuration were to ever change, then the types of vegetation listed below would be appropriate. It doesn't talk about sand removal so much, but I don't know if you mean on or or by lawns or Ocean Avenue.
I think it's or.
Yeah, I think.
Should be or, shouldn't it?
No.
No, it is or, yeah.
Because the, the dunes are backed by only Ocean Avenue is the only road. Well, maybe Oak Street now, that's new.
Yeah.
Since this was written.
I think the thinking was, you know, you have Breakers Point, you've got lawns back there and areas.
I see, okay, or Ocean Avenue.
And you've also got Ocean.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'll shut up.
No, that, that's exactly the question. You know, you guys are reading it and I'm going to speak for Jeff. Jeff wants those questions.
Yeah, exactly. Because that's the same questions I ask when I read them.
And, you know, sometimes when you're deep into the documents and have gone through four or five revisions, fresh eyes are really important.
And we are going to talk, when you talk about fertilizer, you're going to say organic fertilizer?
Yeah.
Question on the transplanting each grass as clumps. The spacing, it says, you space twelve inches apart. I recall that it changed that to eighteen inches.
It's, that has been suggested, yeah.
Randomly, for everyone.
I think we've covered that.
That's a practice.
But, I mean, that just changes up the language.
Any other, other than, you know, the other main points you guys want to talk about or, and if you find technicals, things that you think I've missed or whatever, please send them to me or send me references of them. I'm happy to, I will try to get these turned around here and by the end of the week and get back to you.
Well, I guess that brings us to when we want to talk about this again, as we'll get the new documentation. My suspicion is we'll go through it, have a bunch of changes and we'll do it again. So I would say two weeks. Colleen has got her calendar up and we could.
Does that put us at the time of our regular meeting?
Probably.
Our regular city council meeting.
Oh, oh, two weeks.
Chris?
And something else to consider is that you have a request from the fire district for a joint meeting. And so we may want to combine, you know, this meeting with, with that. So they've asked for something relatively quick.
In the chamber?
Yeah.
What day is that? Do you mean a Wednesday?
No. Well, the chamber, I think, is, is tentatively the 12th. My question is, we want to have that, it'll be to discuss the first quarter. So we've had the first full quarter, or at least in this year, that we've had the, the contract. And you anticipate that taking a short amount of time, considerable amount of time, trying to balance the workshop workload?
I have given up trying to estimate the time.
Well, would it be better served if we continued these as work sessions? If we're not actually deliberating on it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we can, we can change. I guess my question is more the frequency. But yes, because we're approaching it the way that we are, I think it was good that you had an official meeting when you made the decision as far as the motion about grading for views. And, but subsequent to that, we're talking about a lot of ordinance changes, comp plan changes, those kind of things. So I don't see a problem changing at this point to, to workshops or to have these discussions during workshops. I'm sorry, Brandon, did I not answer your question?
You answered it exactly. I'm, I'm trying to, to, to get a sense of how often we need to do this.
If we go with two weeks, it'll be just under a week before your next council meeting. That would be like roughly the third. And then that's on a Wednesday, the following Tuesday is the fifth. I think that the, I've now received a letter, I'm playing phone tag with the chair of the fire district, but my understanding is they want to meet by the end of October. They just had their meeting.
And, and who will their representative be?
They're talking about the board coming. I imagine you'd have a meeting down here with the council and their board.
Hopefully, the 29th, Tuesday.
Yeah, the only reason that we switched this to a Wednesday was.
My fault, yeah.
It's not true.
Too far, too busy.
Twenty ninth?
Yeah, Tuesday, the 20th.
Okay, that gives us the 29th and then the fifth and then the 12th. Okay.
So, so that night, we're doing the, the fire district request and the, and this, the dune?
And that, that way, if Jeff can get us, you know, by the 21st, an update, we'll be able to, to do our homework and hopefully have another discussion on it, see where it goes.
I'm talking about 5:30.
Can you go up to the moment that you, we had it in here for some time at the end of October for the city hall, police station slides and document?
I think we can do it after the 29th. You're right, that's when we had it kind of rescheduled, but there's just so many other things happening. I don't think that it'll take too much time because I think most of the slides that we, you folks would consider would be in volume one of the documents that you've been handing out. So you've seen them before. My, I think that the question will be, do you want to show eight? Do you want to show three? I think that that would be more, you know, how, what do you want to present out of all the material that's there?
Well, it might be better to wait for the vetting committee to, to discuss because they may have some ideas too about what we want.
My concern there is getting the information to the Secretary of State because there is a turnaround time for that. And usually what happens is you first submit all the comments or rejections or whatever, that's two weeks and it's in those two weeks. So it, it just takes some time. So if we can get some things in and find out what's approved and then what kind of changes, I think we might be better off. I think that, you know, there's a possibility that the vetting committee may result in some changes in, in numbers, building size, whatever. But generally, that would just be a change of the slide that we would already approved or at least sent for their review. It would just change the numbers. So I think that we need to get that process done.
Do we know when the vetting committee is going to meet? First meeting?
We're trying to get first week of November. I don't know where we are on the process. We're trying to find out Lisa Pedersen's dates and then trying to send out. So if I clear that up. So I, I guess, you know, and we're talking about the 29th.
5:30.
Yeah. That, I may have a problem, but I don't have to be here. But there is something on the 29th that I have to do, but I don't know if I'll be back in time. So something else can cover that. So I think that we got, there's no question on how much time to allow and whether or not. on how much time to allow, and whether or not a chamber discussion can fit into a workshop. And maybe we'll just put the selection of the slides, of the potential slides, on the twelfth. I don't know if it will take that much time. We will send you what we think makes sense, so you have a chance to look at it before. So we won't ask you to start, you know, on page one, if you want, anything. So we'll get something to you.
Okay, then. So we got the twenty-ninth.
We have coffee with the counselors.
Coffee with the counselors Monday, the twenty-first, at ten a.m. Come talk to us.
I won't let me.
Also, can I ask a question? May I? When we were doing our tour, and we were in the presidential streets, there were some pipes that were going out into the sand. And I'd like to have some kind of a report on that, what that means. That seemed very unnatural. And I'd really like to know more about it.
You're talking like that four-inch PVC?
Yeah, there were like five different ones in a row.
Yeah, yeah.
So it, it was pretty like you were in Mars, or something. Anyway, it looked really strange, and I'd like to have some explanation about it.
We'll get, we'll get time for it.
Okay, then, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Can I just make one other thing?